Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
Of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtswell for the flag. We will move on to the roll call this week and we'll try and make sure we get everyone this time. Please remember, as I call your name, state whether or not you are present and the city or location that you are currently in. Councilmember Richards.
I'm at home, Mayor.
Okay, great. City of South Lyon then, right? Councilmember Richards?
Yeah, City of South Lyon, yeah.
Oh, right. Councilmember Kennedy?
Present, City of South Lyon.
Councilmember Dill?
Present, City of South Lyon.
Councilmember Walton?
Present, City of South Lyon.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Present, City of South Lyon.
And Councilmember Kibble?
Here at South Lyon.
And Mayor Pellchat also present in the City of South Lyon. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the city council minutes from January 11th, 2021. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll move the minutes.
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of this evening's agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please be sure to state your name and address, and please remember that we have a two-minute time limit. City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone with a virtual or their real hand raised to speak this evening?
We have Ryan Lair.
All right.
Good evening. Good evening, council. And I just wanted to say that I submitted a letter of resignation from the Culture Arts Commission to Lisa earlier this afternoon. And just want to thank you, thank council and the council, the mayor and council for giving me the honor and privilege to serve on such a wonderful commission. But due to personal reasons, I got to move on. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lair, for your commitment to the Cultural Arts Commission, and we wish you well.
Thank you.
Does that look like it's it for public comment? Please, City Clerk Deaton?
No one else is raising their hand at the moment.
Okay. We will close our first public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown with DDA Director, Mr. Mack.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to go too much into the Oakland County Restaurant Relief Program as we're discussing that later in the meeting. Just know that we've received all the items from Oakland County, and we're working on getting them distributed to our restaurants as soon as we can. With the impending snow, it's probably going to be a little bit later than we hoped. On Wednesday of last week, I met with the individuals that are looking to open the winery at a new, at a new location in the downtown. They're currently working with an architect to determine if the location they've selected is feasible. Last week, I reached out to more than 60 South Lyon businesses and encouraged them to apply for a number of grants that have become available through the state of Michigan and the National Main Street Center. Main Street Oakland County has reached out to me about the potential for doing a patronicity crowdfunding campaign similar to what we did in the summer for the Lion Theater. I'm still in contact with the county and with the Lion Theater to see if they want to do that, but it would be arranged in a manner, in a manner similar to how we did it over the summer. As of today, this morning, the liquor license applicant applicant submitted the additional documents that I requested as outlined in the city's liquor license ordinance. So I'll be sending those out to the various departments to have their assessment on the, on the application. And then also on Friday of last week, I was informed that I was selected to participate in the Michigan Downtown Association's Professional Development Program. So that takes about two to three years to complete, but it is the only one in the state that's offered. And I feel like it's a, it's going to be a good way for me to improve my knowledge and, you know, do better to, to help make downtown South Lyon better. So that's all, all I've got for you tonight.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nate, I just wanted to, on the Michigan Downtown Association, they, do you know that they're having a spring workshop called Taking It To The Streets? Have you seen that? It's a, they're going to be doing best practices as we transition out of the shutdown, talk about how other, other businesses adapted, lessons and that kind of thing. I just thought you might want to take a look at that.
Yep, yep, I'll be, I'll be attending that. I think as being selected to be in this professional development program, I have to attend that in order to get credits to count towards the completion of it, so.
Great. I just came across that and I thought it would be really great for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Nate as of now? All right, great. Congratulations, Nate. I look forward to hearing about how that goes. That's awesome.
Thank you. Thanks.
We'll move on to the Fire Chief Report, and Chief Vogel.
Good evening. Don't want to drag this out on all night, so just a couple of quick things before we get started. We officially took the rescue out of service today and delivered it over to the wastewater treatment plant for the mechanic to remove the old box. Hopefully be heading to the vendor next week. I got an update from Oakland County. They were able to vaccinate over 3,500 people this weekend. However, there's over 180,000 people on the waiting list, so that is taking much longer than we hoped. I have some staff that are really trying to get a hold of the vaccination, and however, it's just slower than we hoped. I don't think it's the process. I think it's receiving the product is what seems to be slowing it down. With that said, I'd like to pass it back to the mayor to do the firefighter of the year presentation.
Thank you, Chief. And I will actually be handing it off to Councilmember Kurtswell for the big announcement this evening. So Councilmember Kurtswell, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief Vogel. Thank you, the Honorable Mayor Pellchat. Tonight, the City of South Lyon honors a pretty incredible individual. Tonight, Monday, January 17th, congratulations to Sergeant Cindy Conrad, who has been selected as the South Lyon Fire Department 2020 firefighter of the year. Sergeant Conrad has seven years of dedicated service with the South Lyon Fire Department. Her passion and commitment as a company officer is second to none and may only be superseded by her investment EMS program. She spends countless hours both on and off duty, working towards the improvement, the innovation, and the ownership of this program. She always goes above and beyond as an EMS coordinator by maintaining personal needs, equipment, and supplies. She is a key component in the department's successful relationships with outside agencies and provides continuing education for the emergency medical services program. Sergeant Conrad achieves all of the above while still preparing her crew for the all-risk challenges that a fire company may face. She is constantly learning new information and skills of the job while holding herself to the highest standards without compromise. Sergeant, Sergeant Conrad's compassion for the public and her crew is unmatched. She constantly ensures the happiness and the well-being of others before herself. Her integrity is commendable as she sets the bar for excellence in the performance of her duties. Her outstanding leadership is evident as she inspires personnel through her strong work ethic and positive attitudes. She exemplifies the department's shared values of integrity, of ownership, compassion, innovation, and excellence. Please join all of us in congratulating Sergeant Conrad for this honorable recognition as the South Lyon Fire Department 2020 firefighter of the year. Congratulations, Cindy. And from one woman to another, I would like to say you are a role model for every young girl in the city who would like to grow up and be a firefighter. So thank you. Thank you so much, Cindy, for everything.
Thank you very much. That was an amazing speech. I really appreciate the recognition. This is the award. It's gorgeous, and I will proudly display it at my house. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sergeant Conrad. Great job.
Thank you.
You're, you're actually the standard for every firefighter, male and female, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
For those of you who don't know, Cindy has literally been there during the thick of it, during the COVID. Between Chief Weir and I, we just can't thank her enough for her commitment. You know, she's a mother of four children, trying to figure out this whole school world. And she's still committed to the city, and I'm very, very grateful. So on behalf of everybody, I'm very thankful, I'm thankful to Councilwoman Kurtswell for doing this. We didn't have the opportunity this year to have the typical award ceremony that we usually had to recognize her. So I appreciate council allowing me to do this today. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So I kind of like to just roll right into the annual report. I'm not going to drag this out. Hopefully you've all had a chance to read it. I just want to hit a couple of the highlights and then open it up for some questions. For the year 2020, we had over 880 calls for service. We had 44 fire incidents, 20 of them were building fires. Included in that number is mutual aid to a couple of the surrounding communities. In the City of South Lyon, we saw a pretty high number of $632,000 in fire loss. Majority of that was to Brookfield Fire and McCady Park and Colonial Acres. The average response time, I'm pretty proud of, we got down to five minutes and three seconds average. Partially that was through the Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday shifts. We received in grants and Oakland Together money, $124,054.54. We were still able to complete 4,127 hours of training. Most of them were virtual. We installed over 200 smoke detectors. And finally, we, just a couple of the highlights we spoke of. We had the fire at Wendy's on March 3rd. April 13th, we had the apartment fire on 151 East McCady. June 16th, we had the duplex fire on Brookfield. Also on June 16th, we had the mutual aid fire in Northfield Township where Chief Weir was injured. October 14th, we had the apartment fire on Adams Court in Colonial Acres. And then we finished the year with the shooting on Liberty. The year was like no other, I think, South Lyon has ever seen with the COVID. I'm pretty proud of the staff, how we got through that. I'm very grateful for the support that I received from City Hall and Chief Sowick and the council. I would love to answer any questions you had on my annual report. Anything that was clear, I would love to clarify for you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was just curious, did you find a lot of value in those Zoom meetings, the training that you were receiving there? It seems like it could end up, obviously, the hands-on relationship was, is compromised, but you could still get information.
We had to learn to adapt to Zoom. For some classes, it works. For emergency medical technician, those students are struggling. For the entry firefighter, one and two, that was a disaster. We've had students that we were told by outside instructors, they are super strong. One of the better students, however, when it came to final testing, there were some struggles. Luckily, we were able to get through it. There's just those fine technical classes, they really need to be in person. We currently have a couple of classes going, EMT, firefighter, one and two will be starting again. And it's, the students are struggling. It's, it's, there's no practical time. For example, on the emergency medical technician, we can't be in hospitals. We can't be on ambulances. And it's been a struggle for these students. Now, with our staff that are Cindy and others, we really work hard to try to have one-on-one time. But it's, it's been tough. But we got through it.
Yeah. I was wondering, do you still feel as though it's, it's justifiable to spend the time in them?
Well, you know, I, like I keep telling Cindy and others, we send these students out, they take a class. They come back with certificate, and then we spend our time making them a South Lyon firefighter. But I need to send them out to get the certificates. We send them out to get the basic knowledge, and then we bring them back and try to make them what we believe is the perfect South Lyon firefighter.
I understand that. I don't know that that's out of the path of a lot of, a lot of jobs, though. You know, I mean, you get the basic understanding and then you refine it while you're on duty, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's tough. What we're struggling with and what our people are starving for is to have our Tuesday night trainings. People, we'd like to have the 2025 people in the building at once, but we can't. Cindy has been trying to break it up into small groups. She's been trying to find some fun online stuff to do, but there's, there's just nothing like being in a group. And allowing me to, you know, talk about where the department's going and, and then allow Cindy to see the skills. That's, I think what we're missing is seeing their skills tested and tried.
You see little nuanced things, too, that you can give them pointers on. I'm sure in the just predecor of groups is really helpful, too. Yeah.
And frankly, frankly, you know, people join the paid-on-call fire service just to be with peers.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question about the, this ISO public protection classification. First of all, it's awesome that we're in the 12% of all fire departments and 3% on, for the paid-on-call departments. And I don't mean this as a, why can't you do better? I'm just trying to think if there's something we can help with. Do you know what it is that the, the Class 2s or the Class 1s do differently that we could help with or that we could do, or just?
I don't know of maybe one other paid-on-call department in the country that's, that's lower than a three.
Okay.
Frankly, you look at the ones, it's Los Angeles, Las Vegas, Miami, Florida. It's hundreds of millions of dollar budgets.
Well, then that's highly impressive, then.
Yes.
Well done.
Frankly, it's full-time staffing. You, we would have to be staffed by 12 people. We don't have it. We, I'm very proud the previous fire chief got us to the ISO 3. And I think it's a great accomplishment for this little city, because it's not just a fire department they evaluate. They look at the water system, the water department, the training, the records-keeping. And we work really hard to make sure we keep that ISO 3.
It's very impressive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I can't take the credit, but I'll take credit for trying to keep it.
There you go.
With anything for Chief Vogel this evening? Councilmember Kennedy?
I've got a question.
Councilmember Richards, just a moment. I'll come to you after Councilmember Kennedy.
Chief, I just want to say, nice job on putting the package together again this year. Very thorough, very comprehensive. And I, my compliments.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Vogel and ditto to the other council members, everything they commented on. My question is, out there on Dixboro at our emergency burn building that we've, for training purposes that we have out there, do we have electric power out there yet for this building, for the facility? And do you anticipate other departments are going to be joining in with demonstrations or to witness our demonstrations there at that location? Thank you.
Um, I, I think you said I missed the first part. You asked if there's power there? Is that what you asked? Um, I never anticipate there being power out there. The ultimate goal will be to have our first burn by the fall of this year. When the future budget comes about, you'll see that I've asked for a little bit of money to help with some interior design. And yes, I have reached out to Green Oak. I kind of teamed up with them with this project. When Cindy wrote the grant, it was always thought that this would be like a joint effort between Green Oak and us. They've got the experience with the trained instructors, which we are currently trying to get a couple instructors also in our department. I'm not sure that I will be sharing this with the state of Michigan. However, if Salem or other departments were to reach out, I'm not sure I would have a problem. I think that's, you know, the more training we can do with others, the better we become. Did you hear me, Carl?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for asking.
Anyone else with anything for Chief Vogel this evening? Thank you, Chief Vogel. Again, congratulations to Sergeant Conrad. And again, just the entire community is always very proud of the fire department and is, and our police department as well. So thank you, Chief. We'll move on to the police report tonight, and Chief Sowick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like everybody else, Sergeant Conrad, I just want to say congratulations to you. And, you know, working with you almost daily, the back and forth of discussions during our whole COVID experience we've been having. Truly a professional. If that's what the, the South Lyon Police Department has to offer, and you represent them so well, they could not ask for a better representation from you, your work ethic and your professionalism. So it has been an honor to work with you over the last year and for many more years to come until I call the quits. But anyway, if you're the future leadership of the South Lyon Fire Department, then they are certainly in good hands. And so congratulations to you once again. Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
A couple of things tonight. Our CAT six lines for our phones have been installed in the public safety building. So they should be wrapping things up tomorrow. So we're just waiting for the hardware and the meeting with Comcast to port our numbers over and get hooked up. So we're thankful for that. We were actually fortunate enough to get seven people vaccinated on Saturday. We got a late email from Oakland County. And so there's some openings at the suburban showcase center in Novi. And that system over there, we were able to go over there on Saturday afternoon and morning. That system there, I mean, they had hundreds of people flowing through there and just, just the way that everything was, was organized and structured. It was like I had the fast pass at Cedar Point. I was just getting through to the front of the line like everybody was. It was, it was an amazing experience to see how well they got that many people through there. It was just a great thing to do. So seven of us, half of us are vaccinated. We received our first dose. So we're thankful to Oakland County, and obviously we're on the list to get more. Been having some discussions with the city manager and Patricia regarding our upcoming fiscal year budget, just trying to get some things planned. And we should be submitting that fairly soon and working with the, the meetings, the upcoming budget workshops. But other than that, that's pretty much all I have this evening. Come here.
Thanks, Chief Sowick. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Chief, I was wondering, has your whole department bought into the idea of getting vaccinated?
You know, we, well, we actually have, I think the two guys that have actually had it are not going to get vaccinated right now. But I believe everybody else is going to, 14 of the 16 that we can offer are going to, yeah, they, they want it sooner than later. Yes.
Good. Is the general consensus if you've already been exposed and you have, you've already got immunity?
Yeah, they, they say basically if you've had it within the last 90 days, not to get the, not to get the vaccination.
Oh, that makes sense, too.
Uh, we, we got the Moderna version, and so I guess like the 28 to 30 days is we'll get our second dose. And all seven of us, we had some soreness in the arm with the injection site. Other than that, we didn't have any side effects. And, you know, one guy felt a little bit, little bit sleepy, but for the most part, it wasn't bad at all.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Chief, do we have a new target completion date on the, the phone system installation?
Well, at this point, there's not a target date. We have to get the, the lines dropped at the city hall. And then we have to schedule a meeting with our IT company along with Comcast on one particular day. But we can't get that scheduled until we know when the, when the, when the line's going to be dropped at city hall. So we're hoping, you know, sometime in February. But I don't really enjoy that system once a sin. But is, the short answer is no, we don't have a target date, but we're hoping for sometime in February.
Okay. The other question is if you can share any information regarding that pedestrian accident on Pontiac Trail in front of the Hungry Howies and the quick change, oil change place there on Saturday? Do you have anything you can provide on that as to what took place and how the pedestrian is that was hit?
Uh, the pedestrian that was hit was really not injured. We're, we learned that there may have been some mental health issues involved at that point. But he is, he was, he got the proper care that he needed, let's just say.
Okay, good enough. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else with anything for Chief Sowick this evening?
Yeah, I've got one, Mayor.
Councilmember Richards, you go right ahead.
Okay, Chief. I have talked to workers and representatives of the DTE here at my location, and they've not had very good results trying to reach out and deal with Comcast. And I personally had to tape up a shroud on the pole out in front of my place because it kept blowing off, and they haven't responded to fixing it, and it's a Comcast issue. It blows across the sidewalk and everything. Have you had any improvement with your communication with Comcast? That's very vital, I think.
Uh, well, let's just say that we, we were hoping things would go a little bit smoother as far as the scheduling and the, and the communication. I think things have been improving, and so I'm hopeful that things are going to be better than what we have gotten over the last couple of months. But I'm, I am positive that the service is going to be much better once we get hooked up and connected. The internet and the phone system is going to be better than what we currently have, obviously. But we're hoping for, for some better, I guess, maybe a better relationship with Comcast moving forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Chief Sowick. With that, we'll move on to old business this evening. Old business number one, Oakland County Cares Act Agreement.
Last year, the city adopted a resolution to approve the Cares Act Agreement with Oakland County for Cares Act Distribution between Oakland County and the City of South Lyon to receive funds directly related to activities and expenses pertaining to COVID-19. Tonight, we bring before you an amendment to that agreement. I've attached an amendment to the interlocal agreement for the Cares Act Distribution. And tonight's possible course of action are to approve or not approve the amendment to the interlocal agreement for Cares Act Distribution between Oakland County and the City of South.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the amendment to the interlocal agreement for the Cares Act Distribution between Oakland County and the City of South Lyon.
I'll support.
Was that you, Councilmember Walton?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I apologize. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call?
Kurtswell? Kennedy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Pellchat?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, City Clerk Deaton. Move on to new business number one this evening, Bartlet Robo Bear Presentation.
We've been approached by a local elementary school, the robotics team, the Bartlet Robo Bears, to initiate a challenge called Replay to Find Ways to Help People Become More Active. The plan is to encourage people to get out to community places and be active. The team will place small signs with QR codes that will link to the challenge at various locations in McCady Park and future potential locations along the trails or at other locations throughout the city. A description of who are the Bartlet Robo Bears is attached, a timeline for the activity, and a location map of the signs in McCady Park. Tonight's possible course of action is to approve or not approve the Robo Bear Challenge in McCady Park and at other locations within the City of South Lion. There are a couple representatives from the organization are with us this evening, the participants within the council meeting, to answer any questions or discuss those further.
Hi, everyone. My name is Andrea O'Keefe, and I'm here with two of our Robo Bears tonight. I'm the assistant coach of the robotics team, which is hilarious because I know virtually nothing about robotics. But the kids are amazing. And they have put together a presentation for you that I am going to share. We have six Robo Bears this year because we're doing everything virtually, which is a challenge at times. And then two of our Robo Bears are here because the other four had a bedtime prior to the city council meeting. So, it is my greatest hope that this sharing goes off without a hitch. So, we pre-recorded their presentation so that they could be, they could all share with you. And I even practiced earlier today with City Clerk Deaton to make sure that I was pushing the right buttons. So, please just bear with me for a second. And I will share my screen, click out of here, and hopefully push play. So, here we go. Just a second. Can you guys see it?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. It will start up hopefully. Here we go. Yep.
Hi, we're the Bartlet Robo Bears. We are the first LEGO League robotics team. Last year, we went to the state's competition and got third place. We have, we have a team of three mentors, two coaches, and four fifth graders and two third graders. We are part of FLL. That stands for First LEGO League. We use LEGO bricks to build and program robots that complete cool challenges. In addition, robot, in addition, every, two robots every year, FLL gives out a community project for everyone to complete. We must think, we have to think about the problem and make a solution for that problem.
Hi, I'm Lo. Each year, FIRST gives us a new game theme and a problem to solve. This year, the game is called Replay. And the problem is to identify something to people not being active enough.
Hi, I'm Reese. We found in our community that people aren't exercising enough. We think it's partly because of the pandemic and also because technology is growing every day. And we're also on our computers every day at virtual school. We created an app that earns people badges and points, makes them feel good about their body, and also stay safe too.
Hi, I'm Clark. Our solution. We decided to design a web app game using fun activities and safe spaces already in our community, like parks, libraries, and walking trails. We want to include everyone of all ages and abilities in this game so everyone can have a chance to be active and have fun. Our game is a friendly competition where players can set their own goals to achieve. The motivation is to earn points and badges, and the game will show a leaderboard. Our game includes helpful, safe activities just by being outdoors in all seasons. Players get exercise by going outside in different locations in our community that we've chosen. And we offer a fun activity at every location where they can earn points and badges.
The idea of the game is to get people active in our community. The game will motivate people to get active by having rewards and a point system. Also, the activities are fun to do and get your body moving. This is how we plan for the, this is how we plan for it to be successful and get people outside and move. How to play the game is you log in and get started. Log into robobearsrumble.com and get started. Scan the QR code and log in. You will go to the map and find the marker you want to go to. Once you get there, you scan the QR code. It will take you to the activity. Then it will give you a description on how to do an activity. Sometimes it will be a video or picture. When the timer is running, you do the activity. When the timer runs out, you get your points. The harder it is, the more points you get. Also, there are activities for people who are disabled or have a hard time doing physical things. Sometimes it will be a separate video or picture for these activities.
This is our sign. It will be a piece of inch thick wood that is five inches tall and 3.5 inches wide with a laminated scamy sign on it. It will have holes in the corner of the wood and, and attached to the sign or fence pole with zip ties. The three proposed locations that we'd like to put at, in McCady Park are the Sliding Hill, the Baseball Diamond, the Little Free Library, and the Volleyball Courts. We would like your permission to put a sign on the Sliding Hill, zip tied to the light posts about one foot from the base. The Little Free Library attached inside the red door. Baseball Field zip tied on, zip tie it to the corner of the fence post of Wright Field. And Volleyball Court zip tied near the empty sign right inside the courts. The other two sites nearby are the Methodist Church property. And we have been giving permission to put them there already. This is our timeline of game. Our game, we will test our game in mid, in mid-January. We will, in early February, we will open to the public. And early February, we will add more parks such as McCady and the library. In early March, we will add more locations, maybe along the rail trail of South Lion or Lion Township or by that more perk trails. And in June, we will see if we want to continue our game. And if we decide to continue, we will check our game again in December. We will also be monitoring our game all season.
We are going to advertise our game with our signs by putting them up in commonplaces. Any addition, and any additional City of South Lion advertising that is available?
Thank you for listening to our presentation. Do, do you have any comments or questions?
That was very nicely done.
Councilmember Dilg, I'm going to let you go ahead and take the lead.
First of all, that was awesome. That was very, just really great presentation. It's got to be a little bit scary to talk in front of a bunch of adults at a council meeting. And you guys, that was, you know, that was fabulous and appreciate the people who could be here for that. I just had a couple of questions. Actually, I think you answered most of them. But one of them was, I know you have, you're going to have things in Lion Township also. Is that all going to be part of one like game or are those separate?
Yes, they will be part of one game.
And then I just wondered how, how you guys are deciding if you have been successful? Like what will make you decide that you have been successful?
One thing is how many people have been, would do it. So, we would like to check the numbers of how many people have signed in and made an account. And then we can run from there to see if we were successful or not.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions. I would actually like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the Robo Bear Challenge in McCady Park and other locations within the City of South Lion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Before we move forward, I do have a comment. It looks like Councilmember Kurtzwell does as well. So, Councilmember Kurtzwell, you go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say that you're already a success. And I think that's what's important for you to realize, that just the fact that you're doing something for your community, you're giving something up of your time. To me, in my eyes, you are already a success. And I was reading your materials, and it says last year you finished third place out of 64 teams in the state. So, if there was any doubt that you're not a success already before the game even starts, I would say you are well on your way. And I do have one really quick question that's kind of related to, because when I was reading all your materials, I did have this. Do any of you watch BattleBots? You don't?
Justin, have you seen it before?
No.
I've seen it in the past.
I'm hooked on it. If you're into robotics, it is a great show. It's just a great show if you've got an engineering mind and you like competition. So, so, good luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. And before we go to City Clerk Deaton for a roll call vote, I would just like to say definitely a proud Bartlet alumni here today to have you all here. And if there's anything I can do to help Ms. O'Keefe, please feel free to reach out. So, with that, City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Sure. Richard?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
El Chap?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Ms. O'Keefe. I look forward to seeing you all down.
Thank you. Justin and Clark, would you like to say anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Thanks so much. We appreciate it.
Move on to new business number two this evening, purchase of MSA SCBA and accessories by South Lion Fire Department.
Wow, that, that's a tough act to follow. That group is now totally, you know, forced our department heads to kick up a notch on future presentations, I got to tell you. But there was something that we did learn there about getting it done before people go to bed. So, maybe we just move our meetings a little bit quicker. So, I really, I enjoyed that comment. Tonight, the agenda topic is regarding purchasing the 17 MSA self-contained breathing apparatuses and accessories. The current South Lion Fire Department SCBA's are over 10 years old, and they do require replacement after 10 years. Also, the current SCBA manufacturer, Avon ISI, informed the South Lion Fire Department they will no longer be manufacturing the SCBA's and they will no longer service them in 2021. This has left us in a desperate situation where unable to receive service, parts, and additional masks. The City of South Lion faces some serious liability if a firefighter is injured using expired SCBA's. There are three quotes that are received from Apollo, Westshore, and Douglas Safety Systems. We have three bids that are attached in the MSA catalog and informational flyer. The possible course of actions to approve or not approve the purchase of 17 MSA SCBA's and accessories from Apollo for $148,654.66. Rob Vogel, Chief, and Corey Armstrong are here to answer any questions you may have and to perhaps explain this item further.
Thank you, Corey, for staying up past your bedtime. I do need to apologize. I realize it's been brought to my attention that I forgot to put the account number. This was a pre-approved budget item last year by council. The account will be 100-335-977. Council approved $190,000 for this item. We've been working on this for way over a year. And I'm pretty proud of the team. They were able to get the vendor down to $148,654. And I can't stress enough how tough this has become when the vendor pulled out on us. We are literally going on eBay. I watched the fire chief blogs looking for anybody who's giving up this air pack. The first problem that we identified is we were unable to find small masks, which has become a problem because a lot of our department likes to fit in a small mask. We recently ran up to around Flint to look at their stuff that they were getting rid of it. Most of it was junk. I think we took a couple of parts and maybe a couple of masks. We tried to make a purchase. Somebody was trying to sell their stuff for a dollar, but unfortunately someone beat us to the punch. So, we literally are, you know, desperately looking to state for parts. And the downtime on these SCBA's is becoming an issue. Love to hear any questions.
Looks like Councilmember Kurtzwell has a question, and then I'll come over to you, Councilmember Kennedy.
I was going to move and make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And then, okay.
I move to approve the purchase of 17 MSA SCBA's and accessories from Apollo
I'll support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, supported by Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kennedy, did you have any further discussion?
Do we need to add in the account number that the chief referenced into the motion? It'll get paid.
Yeah.
Well, please forgive me. I'm embarrassed. I missed it. When it was brought to my attention, I know better. Not excuse, but stress levels have been high, and I apologize.
So, the question I had, other than that, was what's the estimated time for delivery on these, Chief?
So, roughly 10 weeks, we believe. We, we were going to have the bottles custom, put our name on it. We've learned a valuable lesson that if you don't do that occasionally, when you're at a mutual aid fire, bottles can be misplaced. So, we like to put our name, the City of South Lion, on the bottle. So, that added a couple of weeks. So, I'm thinking probably May, mid-May, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
No fires until then.
City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
El Chap?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Armstrong and Chief Vogel, for being here to help assist with that.
Thank you very much, everybody.
New business number three this evening, purchase and installation of a conventional tabletop tire changer for the maintenance garage at the Clean Water Plant.
Tire changer for the maintenance garage is mechanical failures and will need replacement. The current equipment is potentially hazardous with the air leak that is occurring. This is also called damage to rims while attempting to break the tires from the rims. Non-budget item can be purchased with the vehicle maintenance account within the Department of Public Works. Materials attached tonight are the three quotes to obtain and upgrade the current tabletop tire changers. And we've also included images of the tire changer and upgrade Hunter TCX-56 replacement. tabletop tire changers. And we've also included images of the tire changer and upgrade Hunter TCX fifty-six replacement tabletop changer. Possible course of action are the approve or deny the purchase of the insulation of the Hunter tabletop tire changer for the maintenance garage located at the Clean Water Plant for the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-four cents from Allied Incorporated. Included estimated shipping costs. This piece of equipment can be purchased out of vehicle maintenance account under one oh one four four oh eight six three. Uh, the EPW Director Doug Varney is here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the purchase.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd just like to make the motion to approve the purchase and installation of the uh, new Hunter model TCX fifty-six tabletop tire changer for the maintenance garage at the Clean Water Plant for the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. Underlined item one zero one dash four four zero dash eight six three.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dill. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was just curious, what's the turnaround time for this being installed and up and running?
I'm hoping four to six weeks.
I didn't see that. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions for Mr. Varney? Okay, great. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Peltap?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. New business number four. Inter-local agreement with Oakland County for the restaurant relief program.
So yeah, this is um, a draft inter-local agreement from Oakland County. Uh, last Friday, they had a meeting at uh, ten AM. It finished at eleven thirty. And they presented to us the the draft inter-local agreement from the county, uh, basically authorizing, you know, the city to enter into the agreement with them, uh, which would in turn release seventy percent of the funds that we have remaining. Um, the the total we have remaining currently is twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars of funds to go back to restaurants. The reason why it's it's on the agenda tonight is because the agreement is due back to the county by five PM on Thursday, February fourth. Council does not meet again until February eighth. Um, so we need to have that back to them in time to get to get the funds dispersed. And additionally, we had um, City Attorney Hamame take a look at the agreement over the weekend. Uh, she got back to Paul and I today and said that she doesn't see any, or she has no objections to the agreement as it is written. Um, the only thing that will change in the agreement when the final agreement comes through is the city of South Lyon's items that they've been allocated as well as a dollar amount. That's not in the draft agreement now. So that will be included when when the final one comes through.
City Attorney Hamame, I'm gonna come to you first.
Um, just, uh, I I did a review as as Nate indicated. You know, my only concern with the agreement is the requirement that the city reimburse any funds if the funds are not used as permitted by the agreement. I mean, if we're giving the money that is really kind of out of our control. Um, these are things that they are not gonna bend on. And so as I concluded in my review letter, I mean, this is as all county agreements, it's not likely going to be negotiable at this point considering the timeline. Um, I don't see any legal impediment. I just highlighted in my review letter just the um, the requirement. And I just cautioned uh, to uh, create pay particular attention to the reimbursement and the requirement under the agreement. The only other thing I would ask is I noticed in Nate's agenda note, he requests that you authorize the city manager and the city attorney to execute the agreement. I would request that you change that to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement upon review and approval of the final version by the city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, City Attorney Hamame, for your concerns on that and highlighting them. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Uh, in the event that someone were found to have acted improperly with the uh, with whatever revenues are generated here, do we have the ability to impose ourselves on them to recoup that money?
I assume that question's to me.
Yes.
If there's an agreement between us and the recipient, if we have a private agreement, then we could then go after the recipient and the funds for inappropriately um, expending those funds. But our responsibility would still be our responsibility to the county.
We would have to make the county whole and then take action, you know, ourselves. Okay, thank you.
Good question, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Kennedy, do you have something?
I was just gonna make the uh, the motion to authorize the uh, mayor and city clerk to approve uh, the uh, how did you word that again, Attorney Hamame?
Um, the mayor and the clerk to execute the agreement upon approval of the city manager and city attorney of the final version that we received from the county.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Council, Councilmember Kibble. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Richards?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Peltap?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll now move on to the budget this evening. Does anyone have anything on the budget this evening? Okay. We'll move on to our second public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. And please remember that we do have a two-minute time limit. City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone with their virtual hand raised or anyone in line to speak?
No, we do not.
Thank you. We will close public comment at this time and move on to the manager's report with city managers only.
Um, council, including your packets tonight, have provided you information regarding the COVID-nineteen vaccination interim prioritization guidance, as well as frequently asked questions related to COVID-nineteen. Our staff continues to monitor situations, attend meetings as necessary. And obviously, you've heard this evening regarding individuals already getting vaccinated. Um, compiling the list of city council goals and objectives, and I'll be getting that compiled list to all the members of city council very soon. Uh, update you regarding CDBG activities, uh, because it's been delayed this year and we will be having this come before city council in February and again in March for approval. I've included within the packet also regarding some dates for the joint city council planning committee meeting. Please email me or call me. Let me know what dates were best for you. Are those ones that I've listed uh, within the managers, uh, the city council update? The Capitol Conference, a couple of members have expressed an interest in attending that. If anybody else wants to attend the MML Capitol Conference on March sixteenth and seventeenth, please let the city clerk know. Uh, city council also future agendas. We will have the police department presenting their yearly report. And um, also be bringing the city count uh, to city council, the city's investment policy review. And that's all I have. If you have to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Anyone have anything for Paul tonight? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was curious, has there been any further developments with the property where a slara building had been? Yes, we've had several meetings with the um, with one group that we deem to be the uh, best qualified in order to move forward, but we're still trying to work out details. Uh, the main focus has been, it's trying to get a uh, home built on that site that is uh, very compatible with the other houses within the neighborhood. And those have been the items that we've been working on with our committee that we have at City Hall. I was kind of curious as well as to price point and all that, how are we determining what um, their buy-in to get up the opportunity would be? Well, all those details are kind of secondary to making sure that we have the correct um, home that's built on site. But it is the price and also their ability in which to um, facilitate or complete that development on their property. So that's part, all all those things are are combined. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for city managers only this evening? Okay, great. Thank you, Paul. With that, we'll move on to our council comments this evening and we'll kick it off with Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight, I want to compliment our residents on their overall recycling efforts for twenty twenty. In reviewing the dashboard metrics provided by RACAC, our our city recycled about thirty-three percent of the waste that it generated. The specific categories that comprise that rate consist of regular recyclables from the tubs and carts, clothing and household goods that are collected for reuse by simple recycling, household hazardous waste that is collected at the household hazardous waste events and recycled or used as fuel in the case of flammable's, and yard waste, which is composted. Our recycling rate is significant, significantly exceeds the overall state recycling rate of just eighteen percent. Your efforts have kept almost two thousand tons of materials from our city from ending up in landfills. So please keep up the good work. Next, since it looks like we might get a bit of snow over the next twenty-four to thirty-six hours, I just want to remind our residents to help the city's DBW crews. Help you by removing the cars from the streets and parking them in their driveways. Also, since tomorrow is a GFL collection day, please remember to place all trash and recycling containers on the curb as well and keep them out of the roadway. These actions on your part will allow the DPW crews to quickly and effectively clear the snow from the roads. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Some great reminders in there. Yeah, you're right. Until we terraform Mars, we need to take care of the planet we're on. So great job on the recycling effort by the community. We'll move on to Councilmember Walton this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a couple of things tonight. I want to um, congratulate firefighter, um, Cindy Conrad for firefighter of the year. That's a great role model for all of our young women of the city of South Lyon um, and and all around us. I mean, it really speaks volumes of your efforts and how well you work with your team. So thank you so much, Cindy. Um, and I also wanted to let people know that uh, TCBY is collecting new socks through February third that will be donated to active faith. So if you have some um, extra new socks in the package, feel free to drop them off, get yourself a little yogurt, ice cream or something and move on. But they'll be happy to take them and get them back to faith for you. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things. Um, I noticed that after an article came out, um, there's a lot of social media talk about the uh, the rezoning and the proposed development in Dixboro. And uh, there were some complaining and I have asked several people to please uh, address council or our email or come to a meeting. And I've actually had several people do that, um, sending some emails. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate people taking the proper channels to express their views. And if anybody else has any views on um, this, to please do the same. Um, I actually noticed there were some people um, in the, in our attendees today that were um, some of the people that uh, spoke to me about doing that. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that. Um, another thing I want to talk about really quickly is I started noticing and wanted to point out um, some businesses and residents who do things every day that uh, they just do it without any fanfare. I just want to say things that I appreciate. Um, I have neighbors that I've had for the last, I don't know, fourteen years that um, is a retired couple, every single day, even when it's freezing out, they get go, they leave their house with a garbage picker-upper and a garbage bag and they walk the trail and they pick up garbage every single day. Their last na, their Mr. and Mrs. Moore, and they live in my neighborhood. And I just wanted to say that that is something they do without asking for anything in return. And I I just really appreciate it. I dropped them a note today to s, to say that as well. Um, also wanted to, I can't remember if I mentioned this before, but I wanted to thank the post office workers um, over the holidays and just with all the mess going on. We have really great post office workers in our, that work at our um, facility. And they get, they get a lot of uh, garbage thrown at them sometimes. And I just want to say how much I appreciate their patience, their kindness. And they're always apologizing for your weight when it has nothing to do with them whatsoever. So I wanted to mention that. Um, and the last uh, group I wanted to mention was our road crews. Um, I always think it's amazing how many times my road gets plowed. I live in a tiny little street that is not a through street for anybody and it is constantly being plowed and salt. And I can't believe that they can do it so much and so fast. And it's just really, really appreciated. And they they do that. And again, they don't get a lot of appreciation. So I just wanted to say thank you to all those people. And that's all. Thank you.
Great comments tonight, Councilmember Dill. And and an additional thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Moore for your contributions to the community. Councilmember Richards?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just have uh, two comments I want to make uh, uh, regarding our fire department. Um, I had occasion this week to, or last week, to reach out to uh, Deputy Chief Moynihan. And uh, I, he told me to bring him, bring in uh, some defective um, surge protectors that I had and I'd replaced with new ones. And uh, I, when I got there to the fire department, uh, it was really a rough day that day. I was greeted by uh, our firefighter of the year, Miss Cindy Conrad. And she was very helpful and uh, you didn't know me very well, uh, but uh, we got acquainted and she gave me a chair to sit in, which I needed, and a glass of water to drink, which I needed. And uh, we had a very good rapport. Uh, and uh, I wish her the very best in her uh, you know, future endeavors here with our, with our department. The second uh, uh, instance with the fire department, uh, my landlord gave them a call because an issue came up with my furnace and uh, at my residence. And there was a possibility of carbon monoxide. And I don't have a detector. And the landlord has to call that in. I can't do that. Uh, and he called him and they came over and asked me if I wanted some blood pressure check. And I said, yes, that'd be wonderful. Here comes the HVA with uh, a truck and and their personnel. And they had the most modern high-tech equipment I have ever seen. I've never seen anything like that. Uh, and they gave me an EKG right sitting in my chair here, right at my house, and printed it out. And that was uh, truly amazing to me. And uh, it was all overall a very good experience. Okay? And I commend them highly for their efforts and the time they spend on the service in cold weather, which we've got plenty of. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Richards. Uh, Councilmember Kibble?
I just wanted to commend, like everybody, uh, Cindy Conrad. She's been the energizer bunny since she got on the force. She's always got a terrific attitude, willing to pitch in on virtually anything that's necessary. Even if it's not necessary, but it's needed. She's, she's there to help out. We're we're very, very happy to be uh, in the, in the surroundings with people like that. So that's, that's a real cool thing. Uh, and the uh, the restaurants are going to be able to start selling food again very soon. So I'm hoping everybody will end up um, making a special effort to try to get out and support all of our local businesses as much as we possibly can. It's been a tough road for an awful lot of folks and um, this might end up being the turn where things start to kind of normalize a little bit. We've, we've clearly got a long ways to go, but this is something that might end up making us feel as though things are normalizing. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Uh, Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, once again, I would uh, like to congratulate Sergeant uh, Cindy Conrad on her honor this evening. Uh, what a role model again uh, she is for all the young women uh, that are thinking about a career as a first responder. Uh, we don't have a lot of women in the fire department. So Cindy is a incredible, incredible role model for those women that may not necessarily see themselves as a firefighter or as a police officer. And so she is a role model for all. And so she is a role model for all women that are interested in choosing a career and moving forward with something to do with being a first responder. What a great life. And also, I think what Cindy is able to exemplify is that South Lion is a city of opportunities. And when you're given the opportunity, there can be some great successes. So once again, Cindy, congratulations. The women really look up to you. So thank you. Also, please don't forget, talking about women tonight, please don't forget to support your Girl Scouts with the purchase of some great Girl Scout cookies. I have friends that have birthdays in February and they get three things. They get a toast at their favorite watering hole, they get a birthday card, and they get a box of Girl Scout cookies. Who does not like Girl Scout cookies? So please go out, support the Girl Scouts. They do great things. It's just great modeling that goes on in the Girl Scouts in terms of leadership for these young girls. So please support the local Girl Scouts and buy a box of cookies. Next, don't forget to order your punch keys at the South Lion Village Bakery. They're going to begin to start taking orders on February first. So I'll be putting my order in. I think we all know that the line just goes all the way out the door for a while. It'll be packed down there. Today is going to be on Tuesday, February sixteenth. And so hopefully, we will be able to give South Lion Bakery just a great opportunity for them to, to do well. And if you haven't had a punch key from the South Lion Bakery, then you are definitely missing something. Don't buy them at the grocery stores. You've got to get them fresh. They are made two, three, four o'clock in the morning. They are fabulous. And last, I do want to thank all the workers that are over in DPW. My neighbors have been commenting about how wonderful it is to see the, as Councilwoman Dill has commented, sees the trucks out all the time. They were out on Sunday. Everybody saw them. It was a cold day. I mean, these, these gentlemen just work outside in this cold, cold weather. So thank you, gentlemen over there in DPW. Thank you so much. You do so much for the city. So I think with that, I'm done. And the next time we meet, it'll be February, everybody. So we're through the coldest month of the year, January. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. I just have a couple of brief things this evening. I did have an email come across my desk from the Census Bureau and they are looking for a field representative in Oakland County. It seems like it's a very good position and if you're a little bit of a social butterfly, I would encourage you to check it out at census.gov and then you want to look under the Chicago region if you have any interest in working with the United States Census Bureau. Also, fun fact, on this day in nineteen twenty-four, the first Winter Olympiad opened in France. I do want to also echo some of the comments earlier. You know, be careful on your commute tomorrow. We're going to get our first real dose of some Michigan winter, it looks like. You know, thank you to our incredible staff at the Public Works. We, we know you're going to be out there. And, you know, be safe. And like Councilmember Kennedy mentioned, you know, if you got your street, our car out on the street, anything you can do to help getting those moved is greatly appreciated for our, our folks out there. I want to remind everyone to go visit our friends at robo bears rumble dot com and get our steps in and get over to McCatty Park and take part in that game. It doesn't sound like it's going to go live till February. But that's robo bears rumble dot com. I know I could use some steps and I'll be checking that out for sure. And just one more thing came up. Last week or so, I was, I was getting my haircut here in the community. And a conversation came up about active faith in our local, you know, local nonprofits that are helping people. And I'm not to be up here suggesting how anyone should spend their money, but it came up while I was there getting my haircut that some, some folks may not be in need of their stimulus check. Or, you know, or maybe they're looking for something that they could contribute to that's going to make an immediate impact in this community. I can tell you, by driving by Active Faith while I'm working in this community, you can make an impact immediately with helping our friends over there and all of our other nonprofits. You know, forgive me for not just echoing just Active Faith, but, you know, people need help. And if you can help, you know, you know, it'd be great to donate here in the community. So that's all I have for this evening. We will be not looking for a motion to adjourn as we will be, I will be looking for a motion to go into closed session this evening. Councilmember Kurtzwell. Oh, City Attorney Hamame, you go ahead and take the lead.
Before we go into closed session, maybe for the benefit of the public, we make our usual announcement that we will be coming back after closed session. And in order to participate after closed session, you just have to, you'll get kicked out of here. Click the link again and you'll be sitting in a waiting room for when council returns.
Thank you so much for that reminder, City Attorney Hamame. I do appreciate that. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
This is on a technical matter. I emailed the city manager and the city attorney a question regarding a conflict of interest. I just wanted to know if you've had an opportunity to give it some thought.
So, yes, I took a look at both the charter and the ethics ordinance. Does not appear to be a financial interest, so I do not believe that there is a direct conflict under the charter or the ordinance. I will note that Mr. Zaluski is here with us today. And Matt had some feedback regarding the history of this case and whether or not he believed in light of the history of this case, in particular, whether a perceived conflict might exist. And Matt, I don't know if you want to chime in or?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Kurtzwell, I had some thought about the, any concern that there could be a perception of interest. I know that you raised some concern that you sat on the planning commission back when this matter was before the planning commission on the original expansion of the center. That, issues related to that are not squarely involved in this matter. So this is not a situation where you would be in any situation where you're reviewing your own work. So I don't believe that there's any conflict of interest there to the extent that there's any element of that, that that issue is simply not before the court or you at this time. So I am, I'm comfortable that there is not a conflict on the subject matter.
You know, I just wanted, you know, be cautious and, and be careful about it. And I wanted full disclosure. So that, that's why I addressed those issues that I did. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
I can make the motion if you would like.
Certainly.
Move to go into closed session pursuant to sections eight E and H of the Open Meetings Act to discuss pending litigation in Alexander's versus City of South Lion.
We have a motion in a second on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Walton?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to stop the recording and we just ask for the attendees to go ahead and leave the meeting. Okay, so we have reserve, I'm sorry, we started the recording again and there is nobody in the waiting room.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Would the mayor like a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Good night.
Night.